Good evening, everyone. We're back again with the committee of the whole meeting, a portion of this evening. Call to order and declare, I look around, I see we still have quorum, so therefore, this meeting is in order. After viewing the agenda, is there any councillor that wants to... Oh, wait, I have to do this. Is there any changes to the agenda? And not seeing none, then I will read this. We have a motion put forward by councillor Stewart that the agenda for the March 4th, 2019, regular meeting of committee be adopted as circulated. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. And first... Oh, and then again, we have to do this. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. After viewing the agenda, does any councillor have any pecuniary interests or in general nature thereof to declare? And see none. We ask the clerk to write that. Okay, so we have department reports, and the first one up is a motion put forward by councillor Wink that the committee of the hall receive the community planning and development February 29 report for information. Any discussion on this report? Yes, councillor Hildebrand.
Yes, I was wondering with regards to this report whether there's a status update for cannabis and Airbnb, and has anyone, work been done in this area over the last month?
Mr. Mayor, through you, yes, we are continuing to do our research on both of those topics. We will be having, of course, a report on the Leviathan application coming forward. We are meeting with them tomorrow, so the timing on when that report will depend on some of the discussions that we have with them tomorrow, but it'll either be the March 18th or the April meeting. I can't confirm that at this point in time. But yes, we're still busy trying to work through those two matters, for sure.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what would the discussion contain? Why would they come down and have a meeting?
Well, we had the public meeting a week ago, and there was a number of public comments that were received, and so we'll be meeting with them in terms of how they plan to address some of those public comments and what the impact those will have on their application, so that we can understand that in order to make a recommendation to council.
Yes, councillor Hildebrand.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Wiens. I'm not sure if you're aware, but on their website, it plainly states that they have an operation up and running in Palom.
I'm not aware of where they're operating.
Well, they're not. They're not, but...
Well, I can't control what they put on their website.
No, I know, but just, you know, it's just for your information, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's there, you know, it's something you could ask them about.
So, just to be clear then, so this meeting then, Ms. Director, is just to garner more facts from them to put in your report that you will be bringing to council then?
That's correct. We need to understand how they're going to be addressing the comments that were received at the public meeting, whether that means that there will be changes to their plan. In order to address those comments, we need to understand what those are, so, and if there will be revised plans submitted, then we will need to review those and determine whether or not they're appropriate in terms of any recommendations that we might make to council.
Great, thank you for that. Councillor Choffey.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding was this was to get an amendment to, or sorry, to get an exemption of the interim control bylaw. I think it's just cut and dry. We either get them an exemption or we don't. For them coming through with, occupying staff's time on addressing the current concerns of the residents, those concerns can be addressed after the new bylaw comes in place in October.
So...
Right now, there is no cannabis.
No, but in order to make a, let's call it an educated decision on this, it is appropriate that staff bring forth a well-rounded, documented, factual report from both sides. So, that's what this is about. So, this is just a report to help make counsel. I mean, we could give them the exemption. Are we? I don't know. That's a decision for council. So, the staff is just putting together a report from that meeting, facts that were gathered there and through this meeting that she will be having tomorrow, just to round out her report to council.
Yeah, through you. I understand that, but the ICB was put in place to allow a town and staff and everybody at least a year to see what kind of faxes were due to the community. By them coming up with some reports and occupying staff's time, it just doesn't make sense to me. We were only in this thing not even three or four months.
Yeah.
So, how can we...
Yeah, well, I agree with you, but they have the right to come back and challenge it, and we have the, and it's our duty as council to address that. Any comments on that, CEO, or that's pretty well?
My understanding, this, through you, Mr. Mayor, this is part of the process, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is very normal, as we would with any applicant for any type of application. We would meet with them after a public meeting to better understand what the impact the public comments have on their application and what they intend to do and how they plan to address those comments, whether it's cannabis or a zoning bylaw amendment, plan of subdivision, any type of planning application. It's very normal for us to meet with them throughout the process, any applicant.
Yes, and like you said, it doesn't matter what the application is for, we have to, there is a process in place.
That's correct, and when we receive an application, we're obligated to process that and bring a report forward to council.
Great, thank you for that. Yeah, councillor Hahn.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, considering this particular group, though, has already made the threat of a lawsuit against our town, will be including legal counsel at this meeting?
Ms. Director.
Mr. Mayor, through you, yes, when we bring our recommendation report to council, we've asked that legal counsel also be here for that meeting.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through the meeting that you'll be having with them, will legal counsel be attending?
No, no, it's just...
It's just an uptake of information?
Yes.
There'll be no two-way conversation, kind of thing?
No, it's about working through the public comments and that kind of thing. There are, to my knowledge, they're not bringing any legal counsel.
Just because he is a lawyer, that's why I ask, so we jot in down notes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so, no, that, I'll read the motion again. That committee of the hall receive the community planning and development February 2019 report for information. All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion put forward by councillor Hildebrand, that committee of the hall receive the corporate services, February 2019 report for information. Comments on this report? Councillor Corr.
Is the turnover report accurate?
Who's the director of...
Me.
Oh.
No, it's not. We're missing a position there, so...
Okay, so, if, correct me if wrong, we should have one...
Yes, that's correct.
...determination.
Yep, I guess because, yeah.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't see the monthly revenue report, and the last one we received was February the 4th.
I'm sorry, what did it...
The revenue report, the document like this, the last meeting we...
Oh, that one, because we are in the process of completing year-end, so the next report that we will give you will be December's, and so we will give you the final report. So, we're in the process of closing off the year-end, so on an ongoing basis, you will receive a monthly report. We're working with the budget and year-end right now, so the next month, you'll receive the January report.
December, we didn't receive December's.
No, because that's the year-end one, that's the one that we're working on.
Year-end, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That committee of the hall receive the corporate services, February 2019 report for information. All those in favor? And all those opposed? Motion put forward by councillor Hahn, that committee of the hall receive the fire and bylaw services, February 2019 report for information. Any discussion on this report? Councillor Corr.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the chief. The cannabis order complaint, is people, are people or citizens tired of complaining, so they're not reporting it? Or they're, they feel that the, if they're complaining about it, it's, there's nothing we could do at our end? Noticing in, you know, one in January, five in February, and the way the turnout was last Monday, you would think there would be at least 100 there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, we report the complaints as they come in. We, as the email I sent out the other day about the procedure, we encourage all residents to come through us to generate those files. There could be residents phoning Health Canada directly on their own, which we have no regard, so there are no information to. So, there could be more, but those are the ones that we receive. Now, the, having said that, the one facility on Foss Road has, for whatever reason, has been really good the last little while, but our, the facility down on 20 in Balfour, for some reason, the last little while, they seem to be creating more orders than usual. So, they kind of, I don't know if it's the type of season or whatever, through the process that they're, they create more orders, but that's what we receive as far as on file.
Okay. Councillor...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, in that same light, do we ever meet with Health Canada to say, we've got issues here in the town, and what is Health Canada doing with respect to the two existing growers? And like, is there any dialogue that we're having with Health Canada?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. We talk to Health Canada on a regular basis. They have, the enforcement part of it has been downloaded to the province, and we're in contact with that provincial arm. Now, we encourage the complainants to push those complaints forth to that. We've been told that they have been working with the growers, but I'm not subject or not privy to that information. I, for Health Canada, going there and inspecting, and they don't give us any of that information. We just give them the information that we're getting complaints, they tell us they're handling it.
Yeah, so we have no feedback from Health Canada to say what they're doing with respect to the concerns of our residents, and in addition to that, you know, what the resolutions are going to be.
Correct, that's correct, and it stayed the other day in the email I sent for that process. If you call Health Canada now, if you call their general number, you could talk to anybody from anywhere, and they have a, basically a script, and it says, refer to your municipality, call your own municipality, complain about it. Then when we talk to, talk to the contact at Health Canada, they say, no, we are, they're handling it. It just seems to be a lot of gray area out there, and I can't seem to get any straight, and it seems that everybody's just kind of fluffing it off, hoping it goes away. This is not something we deal with once in a while. This is like a daily occurrence for our bylaw officers. They're on the phone, they're emailing. I could show you the paper trail of what we're trying to accomplish here. We don't have the authority, you know? I wish I did have the authority to walk in there and find them, shut them down, write orders on the building. I don't have anything, I'm sorry, but I don't have the authority to do that.
So, I just wonder if there's an opportunity, I'm just throwing this out there, that we solicit our MP and our MPPs to work on our behalf with the respective agencies in the higher levels of government.
Yes, yeah, just something to work on, perhaps, yes. And if I could ask a question, Bob, chief, do you know what arm of provincial government they pass that down to?
They actually developed a provincial enforcement department or division...
Oh.
...to deal strictly with cannabis.
Oh, and so it's still a part of Health Canada, but it's provincial?
But it's run provincially, and the person we talk to is provincial employee.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Councillor Hildebrand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. One of my residents showed me an email that they got after they made numerous complaints to the government and all the agencies, and they actually got a reply from the Foss Road plant, and the Foss Road plant blamed their neighbors, said it wasn't them, they should be checking with their neighbors to see who's growing this stuff. The resident was not impressed with the reply. And I know it's not your responsibility, but boy, they, if that's what they're giving the inspectors, it's...
But through you, Mr. Mayor, we have a growing problem come April 1st.
I understand.
Come April 1st, everybody and their brother is allowed to grow four plants on the property. When that starts to come into fruition, when we start getting more odor complaints, this gives these people more ammunition to say, well, it's not me, it's the guy next door that's growing the four plants. So, we're going to have, it's going to just keep getting worse, it's going to snowballing, it could be, and we're allowed to smoke it in public now, so a guy walking down the sidewalk is smoking it, and it stinks, and again, they could say, well, that's just your neighbor smoking on his front porch. It's only going to get worse.
I understand.
Thank you. Councillor Choffey?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. In respect to the federal government and the provincial government, we had several complaints last week, and I was sending some emails to Chief Bob there. I did get in contact with Dean Allison's office, and they're looking to set up a roundtable between the town, Dean Allison's office, Sam Osterhoff's, and bylaw officers and the fire chief as well. So, they're looking at doing that sometime in the end of March. I haven't got a date yet. He said he was going to get back to me by Wednesday of this week to see what can be done, because he actually said they're having the same issues in Beamsville. Nobody from Health Canada is doing anything, and it's a serious problem. Last week, down Highway 20 in the Balfour area, was horrendous, horrendous. I was getting calls, six, seven a night, and probably about 20 emails. That's why I'm surprised on your odor investigation, there were zero and zero for January and February. I got several last week.
Yeah. And if I can ask the chief, when you get them, do they, is that through PSR or are you contacting bylaw personally?
It could be a number of different ways. We just don't do the PR system, because some people don't want to go through the system that way.
Yeah.
So, we'll, when they phone or email us, we just don't tell them to call Health Canada. We go through a whole list of things, and we encourage them to go to our website, fill out the complaint form, create, and that creates a paper trail.
Yes.
And this is very similar to all your speeding complaints you get. Citizens constantly complain about speeding. The NRP won't do anything about speeding until they get a number of complaints. So, if they receive 30 complaints about speeding on Cambrel, then the division commander sees all those complaints and hits that. This is similar. The more complaints Health Canada gets about one particular address, then pushes them more to enforce this. If the citizens are just phoning and complaining and chewing your ear on these complaints, but not creating this paper trail, then I have nothing to stand on to send to Health Canada and say, look, I got 30 files open here on odor complaints, I need something done about it. I, they're not, we're not creating enough paper.
Okay, great, that's something we should be telling the rest of them.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, so do we have any formal complaints right now in the last two months that you would be able to forward to the rest of council, like a paper trail?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can tell you, we do have formal complaints, but they're private, I cannot share that information.
Do we have some sort of a case if you were to go to Health Canada?
Yes, our, my senior bylaw officer is forwarding that information. He's in constant contact with the Health Canada and the provincial enforcement arm.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Stewart?
You emailed us, like, all the procedures for making the complaints. Is there any way that we can have, like, a simple outline of that published in the local paper, so every resident can have, you know, a little guide they can stick on their fridge when it's bad, they know, you know, who to call, when to call?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't see, I'd have to check with our clerk and with communications, make sure that we do it right, but I'm sure we can look at something that would help the citizens do it.
Yeah, thank you. I assume Mr. McDonald just...
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor, certainly we can, we can look into different ways of getting that information out there, whether it be through the local paper, paid advertisement, et cetera. We can look into that, absolutely.
Thank you. Through you, to you, Mr. McDonald. So, you must, is something like that already on the website, or could you perhaps highlight it there also?
Yeah, we can absolutely highlight it again. Through you, Mr. Mayor, when the issue first kind of really started to become an issue, we had published a few different things on our websites, and also, as the chief mentioned, just in terms of filling out the bylaw complaint form, but also providing the Health Canada phone number, email address, so that residents filed a complaint with the town, so that we could track them, but also that they could reach Health, reach out to Health Canada as well as their local MP and MPPs.
Okay, thank you. Well, so back to you, if I could, Mr. Chief, so perhaps, instead of going to Health Canada themselves and getting lost in the shuffle, would you recommend that they go through your department, the bylaw?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely, we have the proper contacts. As I said, right now, if you were to call the Health Canada 28 number, whatever it is...
Yes.
You're going to get a generic person that is just basically, and they have a script, and their script is, it's councillor, you witnessed, I don't know how many times, you said that your complainants are saying, they just told me to call the town, or they tell me that's not their problem, or whatever the case may be. You got to talk to the right people, and we do have the proper information, but those people are saying, I need you to give me all that information, you need to tell me what's going on.
Excellent, thank you for that, thank you.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, could we have that procedure put on the front page of our website, just make it a little easier to get to or access it?
Communication.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so we can get that up right on the front page.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, so I'll read it again, as I always have. That committee of the hall receive the fire and bylaw services, February 2019 report for information. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, none, motion carries. And a motion put forward by councillor Corr, that committee of the hall receive the public works and utilities, February 2019 report for information. Discussion on this report. Councillor Corr.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the director. I did get a complaint about the contractor who's doing the sidewalks, and they, the residents thought that, or the residents feel that they're going too fast down the, down the street or down the sidewalks, and it's related to a near miss where the, I presume the boys were playing ball hockey in the, or shoving in the snow, or whatever they're doing, and this gentleman just zipped by with the, with the equipment, so...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, that's obviously a concern that we would have. Myself and our manager of public works will take that back to our contractor and have a discussion with them regarding speeds.
Thank you. Councillor Law, councillor Hildebrand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, director. One thing I'd like to see on the facility's rental information, is you've got hours there, but what I'd like to see is the rental income that's generated relative to those hours.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I understand that that was also a comment that was made at our last committee of the whole meeting, and this will be something that we'll be bringing forward as part of our report on the MCC itself, and then moving forward with respect to a motion that's coming forward, I believe there is opportunity there to have one report that will lay out the revenues and expenses for that facility by itself, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this report? Thank you. The committee of the hall receive the public works and utilities, February 2019 report for information. All those in favor? And any against? Motion put forward by councillor Trophy, that committee of the hall receive the recreation, culture, and wellness, February 2019 report for information. Any discussion on this report? Councillor Corr.
Yes, to the director. How much does the bus cost us per month? And you notice in your report, there's 400 and something people on an average. Like, what does that cost the, I know we're, we have a grant, but does it cost the town of Palom any additional money?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it does. Right at the moment, we don't have a grant, we're between the grant. We finished up on the one grant, and now we're starting the second grant, probably in September. The actual cost is $65 per hour. Right off the bat, if I had my budget in front of me, I could give you the exact amount per month. I believe it's somewhere around, I can report back on that.
Appreciate it.
As well as the specialized and on-demand, that changes every month, depending on the use.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, so we're going to get a report of what it costs on a regular, on a month-to-month basis?
Yeah, I can, I, if that's what you, through you, Mr. Mayor, if that's what you wish, that'd be easy to do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, I have a question to the director. The specialized pickup, as you say, the region also provides that, and what, what is the difference between the two, and how does that budget out?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, or through you. The regional specialized transit is, they provide the service if we have a resident in our town that needs to go outside our boundaries. That's when you use regional specialized transit. If any specialized transit within the community, the region does not come in.
Okay.
So, that's when you use pretend specialized transit.
Excellent, okay, I knew there was a difference, thank you very much, thanks. Any other discussions on the recreation report? Okay, I'll call the motion, that committee of the hall receive the recreation, culture, and wellness, February 2019 report for information. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're good. Motion carries. Thank you. That can, oh, a motion put forward by councillor Trophy, that committee of the hall receive the clerks' department, February 2019 report for information. Discussion on this report. Not seeing any, I will call the vote. Committee of the hall receive the clerks' department, February 2019 report for information. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And committee of the hall, a report from, put forward by councillor Trophy, seconded by... seconded by Counselor Corr, that this regular meeting of committee be adjourned until the next regular meeting scheduled for March 18th, 2019, following council. All those in favor? All those opposed? This meeting is adjourned.